Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. A very happy Valentine's Day to everybody out there. This is February 14th, 2006, and we are meeting in the John Farrow Council Chambers on the third floor of City Hall. Here, these council chambers are open to the public every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday for our council meetings. And we are being broadcast live on Channel 35 and also taped for this evening where we be rebroadcast. We are also being webcast through our city's homepage, www.lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about city council and your representatives. We are also being simulcast on council phone, which is phone number you can call in and listen to the city council meetings as well as our committee meetings. With that, I'd like to thank council members Cardenas, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine for being here. We are waiting two more members until we have a quorum. So council member Gruel, she is excused to be here at 11 o'clock. Ms. Hahn, if you would make your way down. Mr. Weezer, if you would make your way down. Mr. Padilla is excused today. Ms. Perry, if you would make your way to council chambers. Mr. Reyes and Mr. Wesson, I know, are in a Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee and I'm sure are on their way down as we speak. So with that, we will await two more members and then we'll begin the meeting. Thank you. Thank you again to council members Cardenas, and Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine for being here. If Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson would make their way down. Thank you. Make one last call here for council members Hahn, Weezer, Perry, Reyes, and Wesson. In a couple minutes, we don't have 10 members. I'll adjourn. We have two committees that are meeting right now, and so I know that there are folks that are coming down right now as we speak. Thanks again to council members Cardenas, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine for being here promptly. And as soon as those two members arrive, we will call the roll and begin the meeting. Thank you. Thank you again. We are nearing a little bit after 10:10. Education and Neighborhood Committee meeting. Perhaps folks are upstairs. We could ask the chairs to stay in their committees and send the members down so we can get two more members in the quorum to begin business. Thank you again to council members Cardenas, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, and Zine for their attendance promptly. And we can ask Ms. Hahn and Mr. Weezer to come down from committee. Also, Ms. Perry and Mr. Reyes come down. That will leave Mr. Wesson and Mr. Padilla to continue chairing those committee meetings, but we can begin the city council. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, for joining us. We now are at nine members awaiting Ms. Hahn or Mr. Weezer up in Education and Neighborhoods Committee if they can make their way down. And Chair Mr. Padilla can stay up there and continue the meeting if necessary. And Ms. Perry, if you can join us as well. Any of those folks will have a quorum. If there's nobody here in two more minutes, I think we will adjourn, colleagues.
Some of the city business that maybe you asked at the executive. Eddie and Louis, everybody's car is downstairs, so I think it would be appropriate if we could do that because I would not like to lose a quorum because I know next week we're short of a quorum. And in fact, the day's up, and I'm extending my time of talking to try to extend the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and we appreciate the sentiment.
I pass it over to Mr. Cardenas. The great compliment.
Just briefly to let everybody know, we've got Mr. Wesson in committee still. Mr. Padilla is in committee. Oh, it's over? Okay. All right. I'm sorry, that meeting is now over. So, Mr. Wesson.
Are there any committees going on right now?
I believe the Education and Neighborhoods is Mr. Padilla, Mr. Weezer, and Ms. Hahn. Again, I suggested that the chair stay up there and the members come down. All right, we've got a quorum. Please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Mr. Cardenas?
I do not think our rules allow filibustering. We were not filibustering. Mr. Labange and I and President Garcetti were not filibustering. We were just trying to clarify something. Thank you.
The record will reflect that, and we appreciate that. And just a friendly reminder for our committee chairs, as much as possible, I know we have a number of committees that meet now before city council hours. If I can just have the attention of the council members, where possible, if we can have, if they do go past 10 o'clock, if we can ask for folks to please send the members down and the chairs to stay there, that would be great. Or if these meeting times do bump up against the 10 o'clock hour, we may reconsider some of the meeting times of them to make them most efficient. But we appreciate folks who are all here and the nine members who are able to make it down on time. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Cardenas seconds. If there's no objection, unanimous vote, so ordered.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, that's unanimous vote, so ordered.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute that has been agendized.
Okay. Before that, I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a salute to the flag, please. And like to ask our gold medal winner, Mr. Labange, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All in the chambers, to please rise and face the flag and think of all who are serving us throughout the world and in our own countries. We salute the flag, the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and welcome back from your jury service. Next order of business, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. We appreciate the public's patience in starting the meeting this morning. Like to invite you to come forward for public comment, which is available to all members of the public for items which are under our jurisdiction but are not agendized. Two minutes apiece to speak. And if I can ask D. Leenig, excuse me, to come forward, to be followed by Noel Weiss, and then Spike Marlin, and we'll go from there. And if I can, please ask everybody's attention for public comment. Thank you.
Good morning. Donalini Salatanga. As at several previous council meetings, Wednesday, February 1st, Melrose Larry Green stood here singing the praises of MTA. Yes, telling of the great rides he's experienced on public transit. All I can say is I hope for his sake he never ever will have to rely on MTA lines 90 and 91, or he will be singing a different tune, "Toot Sweet." Would anyone here in the audience or in the viewing audience at home believe that just two days before Melrose Larry Green's song, yes, on Monday, January 30th, between 5:50 p.m. and 6:30, no less than three buses broke down? Yes, I said, three buses broke down. Let me assure you, this is not an isolated incident. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Noel Weiss?
Council members, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Reyes, I need your attention, please. Thank you. Couple of weeks ago, Ms. Hahn talked about a tsunami and preparing for the tsunami that was forthcoming. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we've got a man-made tsunami in the form of Lincoln Place. Specifically, if nothing is done, within the next 30, 60 days, you're going to have 38 acres of vacant apartments in the midst of a housing crisis. This is a governance issue, ladies and gentlemen. And, Mr. Reyes, I know you were concerned about the legality of recording these conditions. This is the situation where the developer basically gamed the system by not having these conditions recorded and was able to demolish before they were able to abide by the conditions. And you were concerned about the legality of that. And Mr. Rosendahl is working very hard to get these conditions recorded, and we're talking about eventually introducing the motion. And, Mr. Reyes, specifically, three legal authorities. Number one, the Court of Appeal in this case said that city acted unlawfully. Therefore, recording the conditions was part of what you and Ms. Gruel signed when you originally did this deal, okay? That's number one legality. Number two, 1119 Delaware case, San Diego case, that says basically, recording conditions is not just permissive, it's mandatory, it's required. And that's the legal authority that's in Mr. Rosendahl's motion. And third, although she's not here, I cite Ms. Gruel as legal authority because the city attorney did it in a case involving nuisance abatement conditions where they involuntarily recorded the conditions under that. So ladies and gentlemen, specifically, it's very important that this governance disaster, this tsunami, be avoided and that the council back the motion that I'm hoping Mr. Rosendahl were introduced, if not today, in the next few days, to record the conditions and direct the planning department to record the conditions. Mr. Labange, I appreciate your attention too, and I've got some materials I want to be able to give to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Spike Marlin is next, to be followed by Barbara Eisenberg. And I just have a card that just says Lincoln Place for the name. Is that somebody who wanted to identify themselves further? Okay, why don't you go ahead, Mr.? Okay, we'll have you come next, and if you'll just identify yourself, Rose, when you come forward. Mr. Marlin.
Good morning, council members. Mr. Weiss said is absolutely correct. It's really necessary, and there's nothing to lose that I can see by recording the conditions of the track map. Most of your advice against doing that comes from the city attorney's office. The city's attorney's office manned by Juan Rocky Delgado, who has taken $16,000 from the loyal opposition. There was nothing illegal about that, nothing wrong, but one has to question his ability to advise you on this matter for having taken that money. We need to get outside counsel. We've got five weeks left. We need to get it really soon because whoever takes over that job has got a lot of reading and a lot of catching up to do. But it's absolutely necessary. It's imperative. It stinks that we have to have someone representing us that has worked in cahoots with the opposition. We really need outside counsel. I can't implore that enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marlin. Barbara Eisenberg is next.
Good morning, honorable council members. I encourage this legislative body to put an emergency moratorium on the evictions of Lincoln Place Apartments in Venice and to be certain that the vesting tentative track map be recorded as quickly as possible, allow time for a more acceptable conclusion to be met between the very low income and disabled tenants and the current owner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, and then I'll be followed by Gloria Morales and Candido Maras. Okay, I'll put that on there, Ms. Murphy. Thank you. Go ahead.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I advise city council to have the city attorney force Aimco to file the vesting tenant track map. We need to keep seniors on low income in place because, and also, low-income housing is non-existent at this time in this city. I hope you people are aware of it. There's going to be a lot of old, you know, old people and is disabled, they're going to be on the streets. They're making $800 a month to live on, and they, you know, low-income housing, we need to think of low-income housing. These people are hurting. And we need to also create a moratorium on development. All these corporations are trying to rake in big money on our backs. This is not right. Also, Aimco needs to stop thinking of redevelopment and think more of low-income housing. That's what they should do. Open up a Lincoln Place and give people a chance to start renting again. This is not right. This country should not be predicated on money. This is terrible. These huge corporations need to have a more people-oriented frame of mind to help rather than hurt people. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I get so steamed up, but it's something to get steamed up.
That's your right. It's quite all right. Don't you worry. Gloria Morales is next, and then Candido Maras.
Good morning. My name is Gloria Morales, and I beg the city, the city council need to tell the city planning department to file the combination of the vesting track map. And plus, you know, until now, I don't find any house yet. I have very little bit of money for my social security, and I'm getting worried every day because we go here and go there, and we don't find nothing because everything is over $900. Please, I beg you, I think it's in your hands to help us, please. I hope one of those days you can hear us because we really need your help, okay? Thank you. And happy Valentine's Days for you because for me, it isn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. Candido Maras, to be followed by Hector Jimenez and Dr. Daniel Weisman.
Good morning, council members. Happy Valentine's Day. Everybody read the paper today? Hidden spending in DWP. Two years ago, two years ago, this council formed a group, the Small Business Advisory Committee, to take a look at contracts. That's where it started at. And like an onion, it's being peeled back layer by layer by layer. And who's going to win? Who's going to benefit from this? The ratepayers. Because when you peel back those layers, you take a look at costs, you take a look at expenditures, and that's what's taking place. I want to thank Mayor Vero Gosa for appointing such a wonderful Board of Water Power Commissioners. And as Mr. Nahai said, this is a new commission. It's a demanding commission that is committed to making fundamental changes in certain core ways that the department functions. That's all. It's not about punishing anybody. And, Ms. Hahn, thank you because when somebody came to you committee and lied, you were the one that said, you know what? This is a lie. It took a lot of guts for that. So thank you very much. Again, Mr. President, council members, the ratepayers are going to be the benefactors of this. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Candido. Our next speaker is Hector Jimenez, and Dr.? Mr. Jimenez here? Mr. Jimenez? Going once, going twice? Okay. Daniel Weisman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm glad to be here at your request from the other day, Eric. Anyway, I'm Dr. Daniel Weisman, and today I'm here as the Secretary of the Van Nuys Detached Retina Bill. It'll be all right. Thanks. Anyway, I'm here as a Secretary of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council that has been concerned with the placement of a school in our neighborhood. Now, this is not the Board of Education, but you can be assured that I'll be at the Board of Education this afternoon saying the same thing. I've been working with Mr. Cardenas, our council has, and joining me here, of course, is Mr. Maras, is our vice president, and with Mr. Cardenas' office to try to work on a better system. The LAUSD is trying to put a school in Van Nuys in a place that we think is improper. The Neighborhood Council has put forth not one but three unanimously voted resolutions to try to do this. We need the coordination of all of those who are concerned for children. That is the Neighborhood Council, who represents the parents of our children, our council member, who is the person who is, of course, concerned with the members of our community and our children and our LAUSD to get together and find a better place. We've offered several places. We think we've found better places. Mr. Cardenas, I hope to continue working with you and your offices to get this done, and I thank you, board members, for hearing me. I think this goes to the issue of school governance, which has been a major subject for some time, and maybe this is a way to begin to work these problems together. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Mr. Jimenez here? One last chance? Okay. Not that closes our public comment for today. Next order of business, Madam Pla.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Items 1 through 6 are street lighting ordinances, either denying the protest or abandoning the projects.
Okay, 1 through 6, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call those special? If not, please prepare the roll on the balance. If not, please prepare the roll on the balance, or on all of them, excuse me, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through eleven.
Okay, seven through eleven, colleagues. Any specials on those items? Seeing none, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twelve through thirty, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials, twelve through thirty? And I believe we have public speaker cards on twelve and thirteen and twenty-nine and thirty, if we can call those special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, please --
Excuse me, Mr. President, just to let council know on item number twenty-four, the incorrect Neighborhood Council was listed on the motion, and that should be corrected to reflect the correct Neighborhood Council, which is in Council District Nine.
Okay, and we have that name submitted? Do you have that?
I believe it's, it's not been submitted yet.
Okay, why don't we hold that, and we'll just make that technical correction? We'll just hold that on the desk for that correction. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's open and close the public hearings. Sorry? I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mr. Labanche.
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry, Mr. --
Mr. Twenty-eight?
No, no, I was finding what parameter.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Mr. Parks?
Fourth with twenty-eight when we vote.
Okay, no problem. All right, please prepare the roll on the balance, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Let's go fourth with on twenty-eight. Oh, no, sorry, twenty-eight's been called special by a speaker card, Mr. Parks, so we'll --
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, okay. Why, twenty-eight is up there, did anybody call twenty-eight? I don't believe in --
Seventy-six.
Let's open the roll on twenty-eight, please, and close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay.
Thirteen ayes.
And let's go fourth with on twenty-eight. Next items, please.
Next items on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held, items thirty-one through thirty-four.
Okay, colleagues, thirty-one through thirty-four. Any specials on the supplemental agenda? Specials?
Thirty-one special.
Would you like thirty-one special, Mr. Labanche?
Yeah, thirty-one.
Okay, thirty-one. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
That would take council back to the items called special. First item called special was item number twelve, and that was four card from the public.
Okay. If I could please invite Armin Garay forward on item number twelve. You have two minutes, sir, welcome.
Good morning, my name is Armin Garay from GA Engineering. I'm here in support of the project for the three-lot subdivision, or actually, the zone change in conjunction with the three-lot subdivision. I, I appreciate if you guys would vote to approve this project, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the council wishing to be heard that closes public comment? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is number thirteen, and that was also called special for a card from the public.
Okay, Ms. Hawkins, Sylvia Hawkins, two minutes on item number thirteen.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. On number thirteen, we must say no. We are asking for the National Guards of the Predator to get ready now in their new attack on the White House as of with bombing our missile. We are now at the point of dismissing the Vice President of the United States of America not because of media or public people mistakes, it's because we need to know what type of body do Mr. China have of the five different bodies, which is, number one, iron, rubble, operations, faking heart attacks for blade shoulders of operation, of wicked things connected inside of his body, or plastic body operations. We are at the point now of, now another blame game. Where is the Vice President? What is the President going to say? Who is at fault with the media? Media now is fake reporting from the White House. We already is aware that black people have took over the White House, whether it is Islamic or apostolic or church of God in Christ. We already know that President Bush is faking with skin, skin surgeries. We are asking the United States of America to hold back all fever money concerning to all churches because of Bishop TD J. It's the one that is collecting all money that is fever from all states. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins, for your thoughts on the Renescro account program on the Third Avenue property. And we would just remind members of the public to please keep your comments as much as possible to the matters that we have on each item. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Mr. President, on item number twenty-four, the correct Neighborhood Council is Vernon Main Neighborhood Council, and the address is correct on the agenda, but that name needs to be reflected in the moving clause.
Okay. Why don't we hold this special for a moment, okay? Okay, next item, please.
Next item is item number twenty-nine, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, item number twenty-nine, I'd like to invite Ms. Hawkins to come forward again, and just to remind you, Ms. Hawkins, item twenty-nine is on the opposition to SB 1166 and 1839. If you could keep your comments to that, thank you very much.
Two minutes, please, or three minutes?
Two minutes.
Thank you very much. This is to the Department of Water and Power, Section Eight Housing, subsidized hotel, motels, and residents. We're asking all people to pay cash only. We must build four new buildings for all people to come to pay their bills in the downtown areas. No more paying rent to a manager on site. This is my goal. These managers are faking out the owners of the building as though all money are going directly into the bank account. To all owners and real estate owners, all invoice printout from the bank is using fake printouts, there is no money going into the bank. It is a sham between the bank accountants, cashier, and fake manager on site doing all owners, knowing that all owners will never take out their billions out of their bank account. Again, we're asking for all owners at this time to please be very cautious concerning of your bank account monthly, month that you take out of your bank to pay your bills.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We need you to address the state Senate bill, okay, but if you can, please address the Senate bill or the Assembly bill. Go ahead, you can keep the volume up, thank you.
I have twenty seconds, thank you very much, pro-president-elect, Erica Sette. So, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just basically trying to show him I can read the clock. You don't have to rush me. My name is Sylvia Hawkins, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I didn't mean to rush you, I just wanted to make sure we're addressing the item at hand. Next item, please. Oh, sorry, if we can open the roll on that one. Oh, Mr. Wesson would like to be heard on that, let's see if there's anybody else, just Mr. Wesson, please.
Yes, I'd like the department officials to come forward.
Is there, maybe our CLA can come forward on this item?
Michael Karsh with the Legislative Analyst Office.
Michael, good to see you. I was hoping that you could explain this to me in some detail, since there was no analysis and no discussion. What exactly are we doing?
We would be opposing two bills which have yet to be set for a hearing. They are on bond issues for, for flood protection and reliable water supply. One of them would be $3 billion in this year, another would be $6 billion in the year 2010. It would establish a Water Resource Investment Fund supported by a fee to be paid by utility customers. The total contribution from DWP would be approximately $2.9 million per month, or $34.7 million per year. Statewide, the fund would raise $5 billion over ten years. The motion maker has zeros in on the problems with the legislation, and from what we understand, the bills as introduced will have a long way to go before they are enacted, if they are to be enacted, so it's very appropriate for the city to take a position on it at this time. There's nothing to set in stone on this. But the Water Resources Investment Fund imposes a significant increase on cost to our customers in DWP, as well as customers of all utilities that use water in the state. But only some amount, between one-half and two-thirds of the money so raised, is guaranteed to be returned to the Los Angeles area.
What was that, I missed that?
About, from one-half to two-thirds of what our DWP customers would pay as an increase in their bill, which would be about 11.4% per month, not all of it comes back to Los Angeles. In other words, this would be perhaps the urban areas paying a higher amount of money for flood protection and reliable water control in other parts of the state. Secondly, the fee proposed is structured as a per hookup charge, which does not take the amount of water used into account. Just the fact that you have a water hookup triggers you paying the extra fee. The charge would be levying in Los Angeles the following rates, $3 per month per residential customer, excluding lifeline customers, and $5 per month per commercial customer. And thirdly, there's a $10 per month charge for multifamily residential customers. The result of this per hookup rate structure is that urban areas with many low-use customers, because we're urban, we're not farming the land, is that they will pay significantly more than rural areas who have fewer customers using a much larger amount of water. Only, only about one-half to two-thirds of this money, as I said before, would be returned to the local jurisdiction that is the source of the funding. The formulas above are used for calculating the overall assessment. DWP would have discretion as to how it chooses to levy the fees necessary to collect the required revenues.
Okay, well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I could get my hands around exactly what it is we're attempting to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President Perry. When it comes to the state bonding, they're talking about water resources. Can you please educate us and the community about an example of what they mean by water resource, and an unlikely example that somebody might not assume is a water resource, but Is the Colorado River a water resource as far as California is concerned?
I would say that it is. It's in jeopardy because of the court decision.
The aqueduct that traverses most of California, is that a water resource?
Yes.
Is the Owens Valley a water resource?
Yes, and the groundwater that we pump out in our own jurisdiction is a water resource.
Okay, so these bonds pertain to all of that infrastructure that somehow connected to what, all those things we described?
To the best of my knowledge.
Yeah. Now, there's something called reverse osmosis that is a big issue when it comes to another water source, or another water, call it a pollutant, call it an extract, call it whatever you want, but we're talking about Los Angeles being close to four million people, and we have facilities where we have to treat that water that's coming out of our homes and our businesses. And then reverse osmosis is something that some people are claiming or saying, that if in fact it's put into our system, it's extremely expensive, if it's put into our system, the outflow of that system could actually become a water resource. Is that the case?
I'm unaware of that particular issue.
Oh, you're not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I happen to be aware of that, and the fact of the matter is, that is going on in California at this time, but the thing that we need to be mindful of, I use the word expensive. If we were to implement something called reverse osmosis in the city of Los Angeles, in the community of Southern California, we would go ahead and actually have to spend tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, just, well, it's actually over hun, several hundred million dollars just to retrofit the systems that serve us Angelinos today. It's not something that we don't want to do, it's something that in some ways may be cost prohibitive unless we figure out how to pay for it.
Yes.
These bonds, if we were to do something like that and prove that that is a water resource infrastructure for the close to four million people of Los Angeles, could these bonds address that if it's written in a way, if Sacramento writes those bonds in a way in which we could do so?
Yes.
Is that at the core of what we're talking about today? Having to monitor and interact with Sacramento to make sure that the way in which they write these bonds needs to be responsible enough to where us, local government, we have a lot of responsibilities, we can actually utilize that money? My time?
Yes.
Yes? Is that the case?
This is, this is the time to put forth our ideas, and that's a very solid one, which should be part of the discussion.
And if we don't monitor and we don't interact with Sacramento, we could be short-changed?
Yes, sir.
To the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars, if not billions?
Yes, sir.
Yes? What is the, what is the potential amount that they're talking about right now in Sacramento?
For the total bond issue?
Yeah, roughly.
Well, roughly, the estimates have gone up to $222 billion over so many years. It's more likely that a bond issue for June ballot would be 12 billion.
So $12 billion, the city of Los Angeles is approximately 10% of the population, so just on that rough estimate, out of $12 billion, we should be getting about $1.2 billion is a rough estimate of what a fair share would be if you just took a population snapshot of the state and the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Cardenas, after, Mr. Cardenas, if you would press your button again after you're done with this question?
Yeah, Ms. Perry, I asked, did my time be saved, but it wasn't. But I just have one more question, if you don't mind, and then that way we won't have to press my button again.
All right, that's fine.
Okay. The reason why I mention that is because Los Angeles needs to be very critical of Sacramento, excuse me, of the state capital, and Los Angeles needs to be aware of the fact that when you look at bond after bond after bond after bond in the history of California, the city and county of Los Angeles does not get even close to what its fair share is when you look at it per capita basis. So there's a very important issue for our people of Los Angeles, and I'm glad we're bringing it up today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Same question about reverse osmosis for a second. This water here, which says LA's best, is the DWP water. Now, from what I'm told, this water happens at the source, it doesn't go through the piping system, and that this water is as delicious water as some of us spend a lot of money on bottled water, okay? It's also very clear what my colleague has said, that reverse osmosis, frankly, I don't know what the cost of it is, but we're looking at a motion, frankly, to let DWP work with citizens to put these gizmos on the faucets so that we can truly purify our water. Let's face it, our infrastructure, the pipes that the water comes in on from the sources, as well as the pipes in people's homes, are such that the drinking water we have that we get at the tap, many of us are suspicious about, that's why we go to bottled water, frankly. I would much rather drink more city water by having this reverse osmosis system in place in all of our citizens' homes. To just take Tony Cardenas' thoughtful insight, can we structure this so that Sacramento appreciates that?
Yes, before you today would be the opportunity to place into the resolution the issues that we wish to see addressed in the water legislation and the bond issue.
This would be terrific, and so therefore, from my perspective, we'd like very much that bond measure to include a mechanism where reverse osmosis in the city of Los Angeles would be a strategy going forward. We will save a lot of money personally, as well as we will use more city water We will save a lot of money personally, as well as we will use more city water, which means that the cash flow to DWP will even increase more. Jerry?
Absolutely, Mr. Rosendahl. I think the point that we're trying to make here is, is our main problem is that we're, we're giving up local control to, to determine how our ratepayer money is being used, whether it's reverse osmosis or anything else. The fact of the matter is that that money should come back to the ratepayers for the local agencies to determine how it is best used to benefit those that are paying the fees. And, you know, I mean, this goes back 100 years. I mean, the city essentially built most of the MWD infrastructure through general fund bonds from the city of Los Angeles. You know, so the fact of the matter is that the city has not been treated fairly with regard to water resources. And if we're going to be paying these fees, we want the control to determine how our ratepayer money is spent.
And obviously, DWP, when we had the power outage issue, we were bright-lit while everybody else wasn't. So our leadership in DWP has been very positive, obviously, for water and energy. So let's protect ourselves from the state usurping our power.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labonge?
Thank you very much. I want to thank Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Wesson for their earlier comments, as former state representatives, and the ability to understand the issue for Los Angeles. And I thank you, Bill, as you said. I just want to bring these both waters up. I just took one. What I like to do is, this one's already been opened, but you can go back to the tap and you can drink it again. This is tap right here from City Hall. And it's very important. You know, all water is recycled, but we must protect our interests. Our interests are so important, as I looked at, so I hope we continue to do that. And the LA delegation is serving us well if they could protect our interest on these issues related to water. So I just wanted to stand for water. Thank you very much, Mr. Miller, Mr. Karsh, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Jan Perry, good to see you.
Very good to see you too, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. As we're going through this language and this resolution, does it behoove us to mention approaches like stormwater harvesting and other technologies that help us with our watershed issues, rejuvenating the aquifers, the language it speaks to, how we deal with water? Is it appropriate to insert those types of strategies and language in our resolution to reaffirm the direction we're trying to take in adopting new technologies for this water preservation? Is, is it appropriate within this resolution, given the subject matter of, of this legislation?
Well, I think the most important thing to do, if we were to support any resolution, would be for that resolution to establish the position that the, that the city of Los Angeles controls how, you know, an appropriate portion of funding that our ratepayers generate is spent to benefit our ratepayers. Now, the, the resolution is quite broad right now. It's just, you know, sort of water resources, and it really largely, right now, depends on what the, the, the state board deems to be appropriate. Now, we could refine the resolution to identify some specific technologies, but I think the most important issue would be that the money that is generated in Los Angeles is spent for qualified projects to benefit the ratepayers of Los Angeles.
Now, do we have a history or relationship with the state board that gives us any confidence that they would be looking at our issues for what it is, given our contribution and the imbalance in the past of how we've been treated? I mean, what gives us a sense of hope that we're going to be treated any differently? You know, it's usually the strong anti-Southern California bias because of the water issue.
Well, I, I certainly would not sit here and, and say that there's, you know, you question the integrity or the, or the good faith efforts of the state board. The fact of the matter is that because of the state board, they've got the California Delta issues to deal with. They've got, they've got a whole host of issues to deal with, and there are no guarantees, no matter how much they're working with us in good faith, that the, the money that we generate is used to benefit our ratepayers. So it's not necessarily a criticism of the board, and of course, the board changes over time.
Right.
You know, so, and, and this is not unique to water, as, as is well known. The money we send to the feds for transportation doesn't come back to benefit Southern Californian transportation. So it's really a local control issue at the core.
So we just have to keep pounding on, on the doors and making sure we get our fair share in?
Correct.
And I would just like to add, if it's deemed appropriate, we could add some of the innovative approaches we're looking at as we study the watershed and looking at stormwater harvesting as an example, if anything, to let folks know that we are trying to be creative in dealing with our whole watershed plan and the way we're focused on the river as that spine and rejuvenating that whole infrastructure. I would like to ask that we consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. There's no further speakers in the queue. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item of business?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 30, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we go on to the next item, Mr. Wesson would like to make an introduction.
Thank you, Madam President and members. It's, it's really a pleasure for me to present to some and introduce to others a dear friend of a council member, Tony Cardenas and myself, an individual that Tony served with for four years. I served with for six years. If you talk to anyone about this man, they will tell you that he is a good and decent man and an individual that deals with issues on the individual merit of those issues. It's my pleasure to present to you California's Secretary of State, Mr. Bruce McPherson.
Thank you. I want to say hello and thank you for that warm welcome, Herb, Councilman Wesson, Cardenas. It's great to serve with you. I am here in Los Angeles today to look at the election systems that you have. We are in a full court press to get these in place for the June 6 election. I would invite you to contact our office at any time. There are some real critical federal and state standards to meet, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you for this time to say hello to, to you. It's a pleasure to serve you as your Secretary of State of California. Thank you.
Good man.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Madam Clerk?
Before council's item number 30, and that was called special for cards from the public.
All right, we have one speaker who's requested opportunity to speak, is Sylvia Hawkins.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Concerning the final map, Dana's doing with traffic signatures, we must say no on $5 million that Mayor Barack Obama is asking for, for traffic lighting. Let's set the traffic light seven seconds longer and turn it from green to yellow. The light is changing of timing too soon. That is causing collisions. So that all cars will not have to rush turn to make a left-hand turn. We are asking all school kids, all school classes, if you hear on television or radio that United States of America Vice President has been assassinated, all classes are dismissed to go home and not to your school library, not to rush out into traffic, and now this light signals are changing too quick. We ask you to move slowly and do not cause accidents. Leave the premises without rejoicing because of other school kids' behavior that may not be happy that these things are about to happen, whether it's the President of the United States of America or the Vice President. So if you leave school in rejoicing and happy, there is a possibility it may be a riot of someone that is angered that their Vice President, whether he is with United States of America, AWOL or not, is assassinated. So we ask you to leave in quietness and be very cautious when you get to the light signals that is changing too soon. Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you. There are no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item?
Next item before council's item number 31, and that was called special by Councilmember Labonge.
Madam President, hello. Is the city attorney's representative here? No, I'll give it to you. Yeah, sorry. Let me throw it back to Mr. Weiss. Madam City Attorney, let me ask the Chair of Public Safety to speak first.
Mr. Weiss, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Colleagues, this is a motion that Mr. Parks and I introduced regarding the waiver of the attorney-client privilege on a memorandum prepared by the city attorney's office for the police commission regarding the issue of, as it's been characterized in the, in the press, it's characterized as the disclosure of officer names in relation to officer-involved shooting reports. It actually, the memo is broader than that. The memo, memo deals with the disclosure of all sorts of officer-related information in connection with officer-involved shooting reports. And I, I just wanted to introduce us to the issue by saying that the attorney-client privilege protects certain communications between the city attorney's office and certain city officials in a whole variety of contexts, and it serves a very, very important purpose because it permits and protects the candid and confidential discussion of information and enables city decision-makers to make better decisions for the public. And this is especially true when we have these closed-session meetings with city attorney representatives with respect to the disposition of civil cases. And there are facts that are in dispute, there are witness statements that are in dispute, and you have to have a confidential mechanism to discuss these sorts of factual matters. The matter, the issue before us today doesn't present any of those classic reasons for keeping attorney-client communications confidential. Indeed, what is before the police commission and what is referenced here before us today is a matter that is, in my view, best described as a legal-public policy question. And all the facts and factors that weigh in on this legal-public policy question as to whether and to what extent to make public information relating to officer-involved shootings, all those fact and factors, facts and factors, should be made public. None of them should remain private or confidential. And so the, the motion that I introduced and that Mr. Parks seconded will make the underlying legal memorandum that the city attorney's office provided to the police commission, it will make that memorandum public. And our action today, in connection with the police commission's action yesterday, will permit the police commission to have a public hearing tomorrow on this legal issue and will permit the police commission to have both representatives of the city attorney's office and other legal personnel in to the police commission to discuss the pros and cons of this legal issue. And I applaud the police commission for recognizing the need, the important need to have this discussion in public. That is what they are on a track to do tomorrow, pending our vote here today.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
If I could just conclude, I, I believe under the rules that the maker of a motion is permitted six minutes. I just will finish up here, Madam President. And the matter that is before us today is not the issue, the underlying public policy issue of should or should not those names be made public? That is just not before us today. What is before us is whether to waive the attorney-client privilege with respect to the memorandum that's referenced in the motion, and, and I would encourage an eye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Labonge?
Wait, even I got to close since I called it special.
All right. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. I, as I listen to this dialogue and I see what's happening around us in our city, indeed in our counties, in this region, it's no secret the shock and the horror that we have witnessed when one of our own soldiers was shot on tape and the person who was filming that incident was actually arrested for another reason. And what I'm getting at is the notion of confidence, the notion of how we bring together a sense of support and looking at, and I understand the client privilege issue that we're addressing, but directly connected is how are we sending messages out to our constituency that this body is doing everything in its power to raise a level of confidence by being able to understand who in our police force and any police force has a history of conducting themselves in a manner that is consistent with the authority and power that's given to them by holding a gun? So ability to be transparent, waiving the client privileges today is a step towards reaching that level of understanding that we should, as a body, be able to have this discussion, and we should be instilling confidence in our public that someone is watching, so there are, there is a checks and balance system. And I would encourage an eye vote for the very basic reason that we need to encourage confidence, encourage transparency. And we've learned through the history from the, the love shooting that we had 20 years ago, 20-something years ago, that actually inspired this revealing of names. And I believe taking this step will lead to the next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Rosendahl, I'm sorry, yes. No, 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 no. Your name was above, Mr., that's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd rather hear from him before I speak.
Okay. They'll fix it. Fine, Mr. Parks, go ahead. Then you're going to drop to the next. Please proceed, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Weiss for going forward on this. I think this is, it's rare that, I think, in this business you get shocked, but I was shocked when I saw the paper as to what occurred on this issue, understanding that for 25 years, we've had a process in place, and it's been fine-tuned in a variety of things. Understanding also that on the day of a shooting, the Los Angeles Police Department actually puts the name of the officers in a news release, and then a year later, we're saying we need to call them Officer A and B, which does not create the confidence that I think the community's looking for. In fact, the commission received a great deal of positives just a week before that when they said they were going to put this information on the internet to allow people to see it in a wider range of, of review. And then to find out...
Excuse me, Mr. Parks. All, over here. All this before us today is whether to waive the attorney-client privilege on the memo.
But I'm, I'm building up to that. I'm getting there. This, when you grow up in South Los Angeles, you have to get around the issue to get to the issue. Okay. Now you made me lose my train of thought.
That was my ploy.
Yeah, that was your point. But you didn't, you didn't succeed. But the issue, as I, as I was saying before the city attorney interrupted me, is that we have an obligation to the public, and the credibility, and often these systems in place are not for the police department, often it's ignored that it's really for the community. The discipline system is for the community. The investigating of shootings for the community, the providing information is for the community. This is why we, as a body, need to support the fact that this is done, that the waiver is there, that the commissions, and we support them on that. And I would hope that, as time permits, that if our staffs or ourselves can go to the commission hearings to express the fundamental importance of them giving this decision the right review and ensure that all segments of our community are heard from so that when this decision is made final, we are taking into consideration 4 million people that live in the city and understand that these 40,000 employees work for them. So I applaud Mr. Weiss for moving forward on this. I hope that as we move forward, we can bring this back to the transparency that we heard from every commissioner that we approved on the police commission just recently by this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
Do we have the city attorney here who wrote this memorandum of understanding? I'd like that person to come forward. Please hold my time. Please hold my time.
Let me check to see if we have that attorney here.
Thank you. Could we hold my time, please?
Claudia Cullings, City Attorney's Office. You understand that before you is not that memo or any of the discussion in that memo, but only whether to waive the attorney-client privilege.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
What is before you-
Come on, Rich LeWong, you can come on too.
What is before you today is only whether to waive the attorney-client privilege, not the subject of that memo.
Yeah, yeah. Who wrote the subject of the memo? Is that person here?
That's what we're, I'm gonna see if that person is here.
Good, we'd like to hear that. Councilmember Rich LeWong from the City Attorney's Office, I signed the memorandum.
Great, Rich. Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you see any problem with us getting into this discussion?
Yes, sir. I think the issue of waiver is different than the merits of the memorandum, and I think discussing the merits of the memorandum runs into the Brown Act issues that your City Attorney raised. Whether the waiver issue, whether or not to release the document, is what I believe is put forth on your agenda.
And what do you think about that?
Sir, it's your to waive. The Commission voted yesterday to waive it. They would like to discuss it tomorrow. They would like it out in the public record. It's your call.
But isn't, didn't Patrick McGreevy from the Times already get it? Didn't somebody leak it to the Times?
That's what the, that's what the paper said.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm certainly in favor of Mr. Weiss and Mr. Parks' motion on this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I understand Councilman Reyes' concern and what people see on television where an individual in military who is confronted by an officer, officer's confronting individual, individual shot three times, and that creates a lot of issues and questions. I know we're not here to discuss that. As far as the Police Department and Councilman Parks, Councilman Smith, and I know clearly the layers of investigations, I just wanted to go on record while we're discussing this issue, it seems that there may be some fear that there aren't thorough, proper, complete investigations. It's not only with the Police Department, it's with the Inspector General, it's with the District Attorney's Office. Those documents are maintained by the department. They're working on teams too, so they'll be able to track officers and their conduct. So, there's many layers that have been put into place, including, if and case it need be, the FBI with their civil rights from the U.S. Attorney's Office to do investigations. There's many, many layers, and I understand the fear of some people, especially in certain communities where there's a lot of crime and violence, are there checks and balances. So, my focus on it is that we've already got many, many layers. As has been stated, at the time of the incident, information's released. I don't understand why we have a difference, and Mr. Smith and I discussed this, and maybe you can respond to it, if we release it at the time of the incident, the issue we're discussing is releasing the information nine or ten months later? Is that the issue regarding the confidentiality?
No, actually, the issue on today's agenda is whether to waive the attorney-client privilege on this particular memo. That was-
The memo that was put up by the City Attorney's Office, and that's solely it.
That's all on your agenda today.
But as I understand, because I know that the Times was asking me for a copy of the memo that had confidential all over it, and I refused to give it to them.
Thank you.
Someone gave it to them. So, they already have it. So, they have a source somewhere, because when something's either in executive session or confidential, obviously, it gets out to the L.A. Times with their sources. It's already public. So, what are we making a statement on when it's already public? The document's already been released.
If-
Whether it's legal or illegal to release it, it's already been released.
If a document that is privileged pursuant to attorney-client privilege is released inadvertently, that doesn't waive the privilege. It's up to the holder of the privilege to waive the privilege, and that's what Counsel is doing right now.
What if it was done intentionally?
And this would make it available to all the public.
The document that the City Attorney wrote regarding the confidentiality, which is already published in the Los Angeles Times.
The L.A. Times does what it does.
Well, I understand they do what they do, but the concern I'm looking at is reality. Reality is, it's a confidential document, many pages, it was disseminated to certain people, somehow it got to the Los Angeles Times through their investigation, through their research, whatever the case may be. So, we're talking about taking that document that they already have, saying everyone else can look at it. That's already been reported in the paper.
We're, Counsel is officially waiving the privilege so that there isn't any surreptitious releasing of the document to the newspapers. It'll be out in the open after Counsel acts today, if Counsel acts today.
And I would be, maybe I would not be supporting this if it wasn't already out there, but my focus on, it's already been released, so what harm, what damage, if it's already been out there, it's already been published in the local papers. So, I'll support Mr. Weiss's motion, but what troubles me is that when the City Attorney sends us a document, page after page after page, with confidential, however that's maintained, isn't being controlled. And that's a concern that I have. If we have something that comes from attorney-client that's confidential, what about that aspect?
That's a valid concern, and we share your concern, although it's not specifically before us now. The confidence, maintaining the confidentiality of these documents is always a concern.
And it doesn't appear that they're being maintained confidential.
Well, not in this case, but I really don't know how that's at the time.
I'm gonna support the motion, and maybe on another day, we need to talk about the aspects of confidentiality, what it really means.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So, just to restate where we're at, we are not voting on the confidentiality today of whether or not officers' names that are involved should be confidential. We're voting on the confidentiality of this memo that we have before us. And as such, I think it is important, what you said, Mr. Zine, and I know that the Chair of Public Safety brought this up with me too, that we reiterate in these chambers, colleagues, that these are not to be leaked ahead of time. These are not to be given out behind the back of those who are the chairs of the committees, the members of the Counsel. This is serious, and we should be clear that we make this decision together here today, and then it gets released in a proper way, not because somebody out there decides that the press should know about this ahead of time. We have a process and procedures which are in place to protect people and to protect the fiscal strength of the cities. And you should be very clear that when folks violate that, we place at risk our fiscal strength. Those payouts that we have to do come out of whether people sometimes leak these things and whether other sides opposing Counsel, in particular in other cases, have information. I know when I first came here that it was known, there was a couple of members of the Counsel who are no longer with us, that members of the press could call them up, and they would get the information almost at the end of the meeting, sometimes during the meeting, of what we were doing in closed session. So, I rise today just to reiterate to all of us something that we know and that I know we abide by, but clearly in this case, there was something either from in here or from some other place, it might not have been from in here. But we, as the policymaking body, make that very clear direction, not only to ourselves, but to other folks whose eyes were on this, that this is not to be leaked without us. On the merits of this matter, I rise in support of this. I think it's a no-brainer to give the Commission the ability to discuss this issue, which a lot of us have weighed in on and have some strong thoughts about. I myself err, of course, towards a very high threshold as to why we should not, sorry, why we should change a policy of openness. I believe that that is healthiest for our democracy and healthiest for our city, and that it's a high bar when the City Attorney should show us or move us away from that, which the City Attorney did not necessarily do in this case, to be clear as well. So, on the merits of that, we will discuss that following the Police Commission's discussion, but I rise just to reiterate the importance of that confidentiality of these documents, but to vote for opening it up today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. This discussion is really interesting, but I'd like to point out a few things. First of all, that incident that was brought up, I know, I understand in this context it was brought up as an example of an officer-involved shooting, very well-publicized. That did not happen in the city of Los Angeles. That was not an LAPD officer, and I just think it's important for us to clarify that because a lot of times what happens on Channel Seven or whatever, people are seeing it, and then I get calls from constituents saying, oh, what's going on in our district, or what's going on in our city? And then I'm, that's Orange County, or that's, you know, San Bernardino or what have you. Some people just don't realize that there are city boundary lines. I just wanted to clarify. That particular example of an officer-involved shooting did not have anything to do with the city of Los Angeles, so that will not be part of any Commission record that I know of. But also, I'd like to point out that the issue that we're talking about here is about disclosing a particular meeting of what occurred. And hopefully, we're gonna vote on that soon. But one thing that I'd like to clarify that Mr. Zine brought up, and that is that a leak occurred. First of all, I want to make sure, because we are on television, I want to make sure that people listening, nobody's implying that anybody from one of our offices leaked it, nobody's implying that any particular person did or what have you. Obviously, if somebody from a newspaper like the L.A. Times got a copy, there's probably dozens of copies, dozens of places in which they could have got that. But what I would be concerned about is that if we were to make decisions based on what the press says or does, we're in big trouble. The press is not elected. The press is part of this democracy in the sense that they feel obligated, and hopefully they take that obligation very seriously, about divulging and getting information and uncovering information and exposing things or what have you. But the bottom line is, I personally don't feel that I should be making decisions on this Counsel floor as an elected individual based on what the L.A. Times or any particular paper does or doesn't do. I'm focusing on the fact that what we have before us is an opportunity for us to have some openness and allow the Commission to take this issue up tomorrow and make another decision. I support that. I'm glad that Mr. Weiss has brought this motion forward. It sounds a little complicated, but when you get right down to it, it's really simple. It's really simple. We, as a body, have the authority and responsibility to take a vote today, and based on our vote, the Commission will or will not hear this item tomorrow. Is that correct, Mr. Weiss? Yeah, correct. If we vote affirmatively, Mr. Weiss, then they will? They will hear this item tomorrow at the Police Commission?
To give you a precise answer, and if I may have just a moment of your time, in response to Mr. Zine's concerns, which are well-founded, despite the leak of this memorandum, without an affirmative vote by this Counsel today, the Police Commission would not have the legal authority to have a discussion on the record in open public session of this memorandum. They wouldn't have, the City Attorney's Office representatives would not come to the table and discuss the pros and cons of what they put in this memorandum, and the Police Commission could not provide this memorandum to any outside attorneys, law professors, or groups on both sides of the issue.
Or the press.
Or the press, or anybody without an affirmative waiver. So, as if I'm, enough said on your time.
Good, thank you for that clarification.
Do you need to press your button again for a second time?
If one of our City Attorneys could add some clarity to that, thank you very much, Mr. Weiss.
Claudia Cullings, City Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, the Commission can discuss the matter, and they can ask the City Attorney for advice about this in public session. It's the document itself that would not be made public. So, the discussion could still take place tomorrow, even if you don't vote to waive the privilege. But waiving the privilege gives the public the opportunity to see the entire opinion as the discussion tomorrow occurs, just to clarify.
Thank you. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. And I had the, arrived to just a few minutes ago, but listened on the telephone as I was coming in from an event. I think, and I heard Mr. Weiss's opening statement, and so many of the comments made today, we all received calls, I think last Thursday or Wednesday, I can't remember what day it was, from the L.A. Times asking us what was our opinion regarding the decision by the Police Commission. None of us had a copy of that opinion at that time, and were being asked to respond. And many of us said, you know, we know this Commission stands for transparency, we have not seen the opinion, we don't know what they made their decision based on. And so, what we're standing here today is kind of the same place we were a week ago as Counsel members, which was, how do we advise, how do we decide, how do we give our opinion about a decision that we had no knowledge? What we're doing today is making sure that the public understands why and how the Commission made their decision, not just those of us that are elected here, the fifteen Counsel members, but the public at large. And whether the L.A. Times has it or someone else has it, the public doesn't know what the decision, and that's what we're doing today, is to demonstrate transparency, to demonstrate there's an opportunity for dialogue, and ultimately, to protect the community, to protect the police officer, and to protect the city. Those are three very important things. I just wanted to stand to say I support the releasing the attorney-client privilege to allow for that public hearing to happen tomorrow, and so that all of us understand what we're doing is what we wanted last week was for City Counsel members to have that opinion, but now also to have the public. So, I support Mr. Weiss's motion today.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Mr. Labange, you're next in the queue.
Thank you very much, and I guess I'm the last, so I'll close?
No, if you want to drop back again.
I want to close since I called it special, so if you want to speak, go ahead.
Then Mr. Weiss is next in the queue.
I don't have my Counsel rules with me, but I am fairly certain that the maker of the motion and/or the Chair of the Committee is entitled to close the debate, and I would appreciate the ability to close the debate on this important issue if that is okay.
Yes, it is. Then on my time. Members, there was something I wanted to say. No one called this special. I called it special because it's such an important issue. I called it special because I wanted to hear what everybody had to say. I called it special because I wanted the public to hear what it, because I don't know about these issues. I don't know what happened in 1979 when there was a very unfortunate situation where the Yula Love incident took place there, and what caused the Police Department to change it. But also, I liked everybody talking there because everybody's very interested in this issue here, and I hope we see that same passion and interest for what's going on in our communities every day, in some districts, in greater concern than in my district about violence. And I just want to make sure the same effort and focus, Mr. Weiss, that we have on this particular issue, that we focus on how we could help support those who serve us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When people call the Los Angeles Police Department, they want someone to come out and solve their problem. There was a tragedy in Wilmington the other morning on a problem, a horrible tragedy on that. And I just want to make sure we show that same interest and effort in this here. I would love the Police Commission to come here, and if I'm out of line, Mr. City Attorney, tell me. I'd love the Police Commission to come and tell me why this is so important, what is the reason why we're doing this, why are we changing this policy after 25 years of an existing policies, what I'm not aware of, because I think it's real important to that. Because that's why I called it special, because I wanted to have this discussion. But at the same time, and I know that was a tragedy out in San Bernardino County, when someone ran for the police in that car, and they got out of the car, and then a police officer, sheriff of the county, got in a shooting with that subject, it was all over the nation on that. What a tragedy. And that sheriff is the son of a chief of police in our own county, retired. And I'm out of line, Mr. City Attorney. So, since I'm out of line, I'm gonna sit down. I got it, I strayed, but I've just commented on what other commented on. Is that a ability? Can I do that? Can I comment on what other people comment on?
Well, not if what they originally commented on shouldn't have been discussed.
Not if what they originally commented, so we would strike that from the record. I know that, Mr. Weiss, I was just on jury duty, so we're gonna strike that from the record. And I'm just gonna say, I hope there's another opportunity, another opportunity for us to discuss this issue in whole from the Police Commission.
And Mr. Labange, if you want the Police Commission, you could invite them and put it on a future agenda, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Weiss, the maker of the motion. Thank you all who stood up to speak and exercised their right to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Two points. One, as a council institution, we were the ones elected to represent our city. When you read in the paper that back in December, a Commission makes an important decision like this, and we don't find out until a month or so later, to me, it's very disturbing because it was done in closed session. And it's such a huge impact on our quality of life, especially those communities who have a pattern of being victimized by that type of indiscretion and abuse of power. So, that for me, I just want to put on the record, is very disturbing. Two, Mr. City Attorney, I'll direct this to how you're interpreting our delivery. I believe this action in connection to the shooting is relevant because we have people living in fear of how their policies that we are supposed to be drafting as legislators is impacting their life. This particular issue with making this recommendation, public-client attorney privilege, is associated with the environment of fear that's been created by the shooting, by indiscretion, and now we're saying we cannot, it's being suggested we don't reveal names, but now we, as client privilege, need to offer that ability to give up that right and vote on it. So, it's interconnected. So, I just want to say that for the record. But colleagues, let's not, let's understand that, in my opinion, little by little, this institution, the Counsel, I feel our discretion, our area of influence, seems to be fading and weakening over time. over time, when you have these kinds of actions being taken by a commission of appointed individuals and not elected.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. And I want to, I want to agree with what you said for one additional reason, Mr. Reyes. I really want to underscore this to our friends in the city attorney's office. The decision before the council today is whether to waive the attorney-client privilege with respect to this memorandum. In order for the client, or all of us, the client's representatives, to make that determination, it is appropriate and necessary for certain of the client representatives to discuss, not the confidential communication in here, but the underlying issues. And so I respectfully disagree with your decisions earlier on, to sort of shush some of the colleagues here from discussing the underlying issues. The underlying issues are appropriately intricately interconnected with the decision whether to waive the privilege, and so I just respectfully disagree with your decision to ask council members to pipe down, because they had every reason there to pipe up. And I also just want to say to my friend, Ms. Culling, that you are correct, Ms. Culling, that there can be a discussion at commission of these issues without waiving this privilege, but this document was the basis for a police commission action, and the public has the right to know what is in the actual document that was the basis for the action. That is a very good public policy reason to waive this privilege. Colleagues, thank you for your comments on this motion. This was a very good debate, and I very much appreciate the fact that this council is going to act affirmatively here. I'll just say, in closing, that when the government restricts publicly-available information, and it does it secretly for secret reasons, it is offensive to the public and the public interest, and that is why this is an important vote for us today.
Thank you very much. No further speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll, please? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next order of business?
Next item.
Fourth with on items 10 and 11.
Okay. Next order of business?
Next item, Madam President. Item number 24 was being held on the desk. That is a Rule 16 motion that just needs a correction. The correct neighborhood council should be Vermont Main Neighborhood Council.
As amended, open the roll, please. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item of business?
Next item, there is a special motion that has been introduced by Councilmember Parks, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, on the findings?
Thank you, Madam President. On February 11th, a drive-by shooting occurred at South Hobart Boulevard and West 103rd Street, fatally wounding one person and injuring six other victims. The suspect was driving a red Jeep Cherokee. Immediate action is required to offer a reward, because the suspect or suspects remain a danger to the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's, anyone wishing to be heard on the findings? Open the roll, please. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the findings.
Fourteen ayes.
Now the item is before us. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. This is an appeal to the public that on February 11th, there was a very serious incident at South Hobart at 103rd Street, in which seven people were shot on private property by a suspect during a drive-by shooting. The only information that the police have at this time is that the vehicle used was a Jeep Cherokee. We know also that one victim is a homicide victim, two of the seven victims are critical, in critical condition, and are currently hospitalized. The police have not received sufficient information to identify any of the suspects at this time, and so we're asking the public's help by putting out this $75,000 reward, and we ask for any information by the public to be directed to Detectives Romero, Garcia, or Garza at 77th Division Homicide at 213-485-1385.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on that item? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Send that forth with, please. Next matter of business?
Next items, council has motions for posting and referral.
Most, motions are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk, Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, February 15th.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, Ms. Grule?
Sorry, could I ask for 29 to go forth with, please? Thank you.
Forth with on 29th. All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay, Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, February 15th, to leave at noon for personal business that meets council policy.
He's excused.
And Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused Friday, March 24th, to leave at 11:15 for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Han and Mr. Smith? Ms. Han moves, Mr. Smith seconds.
And that concludes this, Madam President.
He's excused. All right. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Labonge?
Madam President, I just wanted to announce that Los Angeles is the greatest city in the world. The weather that we are having is why this is one of the greatest city in the world. I'd like to call attention to the councilman of the 5th District there, my good friend, Mr. Weiss. This is an announcement that Los Angeles is the greatest city in the world. The weather, all right, and I want to send a little love out to our cities in the northeast part with all the snow that has taken place and pounding them so hard there. But also, that this is Valentine's Day, and it's to remember our love of our families, our friends, our loved ones, and again, this great city. Don't let anybody fool you. Los Angeles is the greatest city in the world.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I have several announcements. One, Crenshaw High School parent meeting, in which the concentration on the, that meeting will deal with students and absenteeism. The city attorney, Rocky Deckardio, will be there. It's February 23rd, from 2:00 p.m. to 3:15 at Crenshaw High at 5010 11th Avenue. Also, a major meeting at the African-American Museum, in which the African-American community and the Korean-American community will be dealing with a forum on African-American and Korean relationships. The African-American Museum is located at 600 State Drive, Exposition Park, and the guest speakers for this event will be Bishop Charles Blake from West Angeles, and also Reverend Dr. Lim from the Oriental Mission Church. That's an event that's going to occur on February 16th at 6:00 p.m. at the African-American Museum. And then, finally, we also have another event, in which the 8th District will be sponsoring a disaster preparedness training at the Epic Center at 80, I mean, at the constituent center at 8475 South Vermont, and this is on Monday, March 13th, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Contact number is 323-293-9467.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, Madam President, I just want to let our Westchester constituents know that tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, my office in Westchester, which is at Manchester and Lincoln, we're having a town hall on the crime surge that has happened in Westchester, the burglaries of late, and there'll be hundreds of our local people with the police and the city attorney's office. So I encourage our Westchester citizens to come to my office tomorrow night at 7:00 in Westchester to talk about the crime surge in Westchester.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Any further announcements? All right, members, are there any adjourning motions today? Please stand. Any adjourning motions? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two adjourning motions. As we adjourn in memory of Christopher William Smith. He was born in Galveston, Texas, July 22nd, 1922. Had a long distinguished career in public service as a state bar court judge, a prosecutor, a defender, a police officer, and also a military police officer in World War II and in the Korean War. He received his J.D. degree from USC in 1957, and his bachelor's degree from UCLA in '51. He served as a sergeant of police on LAPD, and was in a variety of assignments in homicide, burglary, and also juvenile. Judge Smith serves as a deputy city prosecutor for the city of Pasadena from '67 to '76. He also simultaneously held positions in the county council, as a public administrator, and the district attorney's office. He served as an assistant city prosecutor for the city of Pasadena from '86 to '87. His professional association include being a member of the Langston Bar Association, and also the California District Attorneys Association. He survived by his wife Pauline and three children and one grandchild. Also, ask that we adjourn in memory of Jerome Douglas Trotter, born in July 16th, 1950. He was educated in Birmingham City School District, graduated from Hayes High School in '66 at the age of 16. He then attended Alabama State University and Tuskegee University, and received his bachelor's degree. He served as United States Coast Guard, stationed in California from 1969 to 1975. He, he and his wife, who were married in Los Angeles in 1973, basically raised their family and children in this area. He is a member of the Paradise Baptist Church, member of the Deacon Board, and a variety of other fraternal organizations. Funeral services will be held at Paradise Baptist Church, January 28, 2006, and he died at the young age of 55 on Monday, January 20th.
Mr. Parks, I'd like to second that motion, if you don't mind. Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge?
Yeah, thank you, members. I think we should adjourn in memory of David L. Abel, 75 years old. He grew up in Los Angeles, went to Los Angeles High School, and UCLA, and he was known as the great piano man, who provided pianos for much of the Hollywood industry and much of the music industry. He also had a great love of his life, his wife Barbara, I believe, married 48 years. He survived by one daughter and five grandchildren. When, recently, when there was fire destroyed Washington High School's music building, he led the effort to raise $250,000 to rebuild it, and that building is named at Washington High School in the honor of the Abel family. A great Angelino, David L. Abel.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Garcetti?
Just briefly, I had not heard of his passing. I was out of town. I'm very saddened to hear that, and is a very close friend of the family, and somebody who, for years, had been supporter and a friend, and somebody who contributed in so many ways to the community. I mean, Washington High School, where my dad graduated, I know of his generosity there, but throughout Los Angeles, there's a lot of stories where he would expose people who otherwise wouldn't have been touched by music, to music, and to pianos, and to keyboard playing. And he really weathered what a lot of other piano sellers didn't, when things converted to electronic music. David was somebody who continued to be a great businessman, as well as somebody who had a lot of love for a city and a lot of love for the people in it. So I'd like to add myself as a second.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other adjourning motions? Well, thank you very much. This concludes today's, call the roll. City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Sure, okay, good. We'll call them, we'll schedule them.
Okay, thank you. This concludes today's meeting. Thank you very much.